Dear, this is our May 19th Library Building Committee meeting. We have a very robust agenda, so we'll just get right into it. Nancy, I think I have everyone here except for Christine. I don't see Elizabeth yet.
Elizabeth's here.
Oh, there she is. Okay, perfect. All right, before we get into our old business, I did want to take a minute to thank everyone for participating in our special meeting last Wednesday, where the architects presented the draft final report and exterior study. I thought it was a robust discussion following that.
Andri, what did I say?
Elizabeth.
Oh!
Elizabeth, mute, please.
No, I muted her.
Okay. We had a robust discussion, which was the purpose and the intent of that discussion. And we will hear more from Tai Su Kim Partners tonight. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 5 and May 12.
Moved.
I have a correction.
Okay, hold on. Bob Icke made the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Bob Berman, okay. Discussion and Michelle?
Unnumbered page is number one, but it's on page two, under my comments. The phrase "down" should take the place of "scaled one," W-O-N.
Which one? I'm sorry, Michelle, are you talking on the fifth or the 12?
Under my comments on page two.
Page two of which meeting, the May 5th or May 12?
It's the May 12th we're talking about.
Any other comments, revisions, corrections?
I have a bunch of corrections also.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm sorry, I missed. Can we go back and show which were yours again? What was your comment?
The phrase was scaled down, D-O-W-N, when in fact it means in minutes.
Yep, scaled one. Okay, gotcha.
All right. On the May 12th minutes, the first page of item one, Architect Report. I think it should read, Richard has begun the presentation has begun the presentation by saying the building needs to be flexible.
Has.
It began to present, and Bloomfield has changed since Prosser's inception.
Yes, that's correct.
And then on page two, Vangelica Buchanan thinks it will attract a new crowd who think instead of thin, that quantum, I mean, equals all delivery should not attack but attract.
Okay.
And that's all the corrections I have.
Any others? Okay, great. All in favor with the noted revisions and corrections, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any extensions? Hearing the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll go into new business and committee updates. Maxine, anything on the external survey and outreach?
Sorry. No, we have not met since April 24th, so there's no new business to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, programming and space planning?
Yep, we met this past Saturday, and we just looked at the plans now that they have furniture in them and made some comments that I'll be forwarding to the architects. And I'm starting to work on a report about the space plan for everyone.
Any questions for Leah?
Yes, what are the comments that you intend to forward to the architect? What does that entail, please, and thank you?
There's a lot of them. I would have to write them up.
Okay, when you do that, can you share that with us?
Sure.
Along with your report?
Yeah.
The report, the report was included in the minutes.
Okay, so what I'd like, because I thought that she said she was creating a report. So I thought that it hadn't happened yet, but what I'd like is to see the concerns or the comments. I can't categorize as concerns, so pardon me, the comments that are going to be sent to the architect, please, and thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Any other comments, questions for Leah? Okay, hearing that, we're going to Construction Manager Mark.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Elizabeth, Director's Report.
Hi, everyone. Excuse me for not being muted earlier when I was getting everything ready for this meeting. Um, a few things on my end. One, we had a security issue at McMahon-Wittenbury this past week with our custodian, and it just reminded me to bring up to this committee that we do need to think about security at both locations. Ava and myself are meeting with the Wittenbury Historical Society tomorrow. They wanted to discuss with us about the possibility of housing some of their archives at the library. And I'll report on that further after that meeting. The elevator at Prosser went out over the weekend. And today, one of our HVAC units went out, the cooling, one of the cooling towers on the roof at Prosser. So I just wanted to reiterate that Prosser continues to be a major issue in terms of building function. I also wanted to let you know that we updated the Library Building Committee page of the Bloomfield Public Library website, bplct.org. And at the very top of that page, you will find a link to meeting minutes, are all the meeting recordings on YouTube, all of the agendas and our meeting schedule. So if you have any people ask you about any of those things, it's right there, and it's very simple to get to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth and her Director's Report?
I do. Elizabeth, what exactly happened in regards to the security issue?
So last week, our custodian, Qantas, who's a Public Works employee, was bringing out garbage in the middle of the day. I want to say this was about 1 o'clock. And if you know the McMahon-Wittenbury parking lot, the garbage containers are kind of in the middle of that parking lot, but very visible. And when he was throwing out materials, somebody came out from the woods there and started verbally accosting him, and then it almost got physical. He had his phone on him and was able to call 911. The police came, and they ended up taking him to the hospital for a psych eval. And he did have a knife on him, the person, so that that was what happened.
Wow, sorry to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vedanzi. And we had no cameras or anything. It was, it was Glenn was in the police department when it happened, so he actually heard over the police radios and was able to get there right away from Public Works along with the police officers.
Anything else for Elizabeth? Okay, I am going to turn it over for our friends from TSKP to report on the update and the study.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, following the last Building Committee meeting in which we received your comments verbally, there was no written report from you, but nevertheless, I took a lot of notes, many pages of notes as I was hearing the commentary from members of the committee. I'm just going to briefly go through them, just highlight a few. But it was interesting. It was an interesting mix of people who were supportive and pleasantly surprised and encouraging. And then there were also comments that were expressing disappointment. And I subsequently saw an article that was published, I think in 1963, when the original Prosser building was being designed, and that design was revealed to the public and the controversy that arose at that time. So here we are decades later, and the same controversy, similar kind of similar kind of controversy is arising again. And at that time, I believe the committee opted to proceed with the budget for the project, but not necessarily design. At least, that's what I remember from the article. So I'm curious to see, I'm curious to see what this committee would expect going forward. I know that we have meetings scheduled, presentations before the town council, for example. And so I, at some point, would like to know what the format of that presentation might be and what material you expect us to present at that time. But we took your comments very seriously. Tai Su and I had many discussions, along with Whit and other people in our office. And, and we agree with some of the comments. And we think that you should understand where we are in the whole design process. The design process is lengthy, and we expect that it will continue going forward, even after the referendum. So I want the committee to feel reassured that we will continue to listen and incorporate comments and come back to you with revisions and our best recommendations at subsequent stages of the design. So we did prepare a PowerPoint presentation for this evening in response to the comments that we heard. Tai Su has been very busy preparing some sketches. And these are sketches. I do want to caution you, these are pencil sketches that he did with his own hand. And after we get some additional comments from you this evening, I think our intention is to go back and do a proper rendering. So with that, if it's possible for you to allow me to share my screen. Okay.
I think you have permission. Here we go.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Tai Su and have him walk us through his thoughts in reaction to the comments you received last time.
Right. Can you put it on next slide, please? Well, the last meeting when we presented this, we heard a number of things. Building was too big, overpowering, which is buildings. And someone said, the building does not have enough contextual element, even though we mentioned the white car really respond to church and also the verticality of columns carried on those. And some other comments, I believe, saying that the line seems too, too modern, was too straight. Lot more smaller scale introduction might be necessary. So those are the things I heard. But also, I heard many of you phrased it as simplicity and transparent and bold statement on here. And so, you know, I like to remind you guys, we are building the library. We are 2020, beginning of 24th century, and we are building library for 24th century. And what that means is, to me, it should be something new, something enticing, and transparent, we said, flexible, we said, and very inviting. Those are the elements we should bring in, while it should sit comfortably with the church. And I heard someone said, I forgot who said that, but the room field bringing, attracting many young people these days. And we really, library should play that role to bring the younger people. They're excited about this building, Camp Library, and excited about Bloomfield effort. And I really echo that thing. I'm not saying, you know, the elder groups are not important. They are very important and major user of the building. And I think we should also don't forget about the younger people, excited. So those are the, the thing I heard. And I tell you, we listen. Richard has said, we listen, and I'm going to show you some of thought we went through based on your comments. So let's see, next one. So, too big, and I think that the previous night picture, the scale was wrong. I measured it, building was too tall and so on. But based on your comment, I think we can bring down the building about three feet lower. Before was 35 feet from the ground all the way to the top. And I envision we can bring down 32 feet. That bring down substantially. Next. And so I'm going to show you three different version I did quick sketch. This is just pencil drawings. So this one, first one, is, is to, you look at the right, left side, there is balcony added. I think it's a nice feature. It's, it's from the upper level, if you remember, floor plan, there is a reading area. I think you have a outdoor area would be very nice coming down from reading area. That kind of breakup that are too monumental or too grand scale of this colonnade. And I think it's bring down the scale. And also to the right side where the screen, it might be curving the street line in a, in a curved way. Might add, might be softening effect of the building. So this is A, next. B is same, I had balcony. And, and I raised the top, try to say head, head part a little bit more, about five, so over five feet, and introduce this small half moon windows. I think that brings some light inside and also break down the scale of the, this big facade. I think it really had some historic contact with the church. You see church at the top, there is around, yeah, window like that. And the left side, the right side, I'm sorry, the upper level of the reading area, I curve this, the fence in a semi-circular way, so that create more echoing that window and so on. So that's, that's a B. C is a, is a very tall window. Just like you see many church building, side elevation from a main building part and created tall windows and two stories high place breakup to windows. And somehow, this does not really bring the smaller scale, maybe create more grand scale feeling to it. That's what I felt. So after looking at, I sketched more than spheres, many different options. But I end up selecting these three. And then I thought this B, this option B seems most applicable and responding to your comments. One, adding balcony, break up that big colonnade. I think it gives more interest coming into the colonnade. And main interest is, interest, those is located in that high space, but community room is under the balcony. So it gives a sense of variety also within that porch or veranda. And then, again, I said, this half moon brings a natural light and introduces more scale and historic sort of elements added to it. And then adding that right side, second floor, the scrubbed area, really echoing that upper half window and making more of an interesting. So I thought this is the best scheme to respond to many of your comments. So I show you again, I sort of showing up up is my sketch more. I drew hard line and it's pencil stip, pencil drawings. But you can see the lower one is the one you saw before versus upper one. South side, by introducing that porch balcony, it really bring down the scale and it's sort of diminishing the grandiose scale to it. And then you see that little window, upper part? Really, I think it's really brings that historic contact with the church together and make the whole facade much more friendly and bringing more interesting facade to that east side facing green. Now, I know, you know, I'm an architect and I draw, draw all the time, but I really don't think most people understand this brick line drawing. How it's just going to really look. And if you do say, I think, agree with me, this is the, is the right direction. We really like to engage professional renderer and create the nice, the computer-generated rendering. That's only where people can understand really how the building look. And you can compare even my sketch below, both is man's rendering. That was done by computers. It's very bit different. So I really like to take some time to create a computer-generated rendering by professional renderer on this. And I feel very comfortable, this not only maintain the excitement of original building, yet it does answer many questions and, and answer the contextual issues of this building on this screen.
That's last time.
So that, that's my, my comment, so.
Okay. Tai Su and Richard, thank you so much. I think what I'd like to do is open it up to a comment and feedback from the group. Before doing that, I just want to thank you for taking the time. Obviously, from the work here, we can see that you put in some considerable time and energy into the modification. So we thank you for that. And your handwritten iteration there looks almost like a computer to me. I could, that's pretty awesome. So anyway, I will open it up, and I don't know, see if there are any hands up. Any comments, questions?
Yes. Lois has your hand raised.
Okay. Lois?
I have a couple of questions. The rendering that you did for 2016 for a library building on the same site and basically the same size is a very, very different concept. And one of the things that I'm interested in is to choose a building which will endure over time. And so I wonder why it changed so much in the course of five or six years in terms of the thought process.
Well, at that time, the building was designed addition, right?
Well, we ended up, at that time, I believe the recommendation by the committee was to add on to the town hall. So there was some, it was, it was a very strong connection to town hall, and we had a choice. Do we make it more modern or do we try to blend it into town hall? And, and we actually created something that did a little bit of both, but it more blended in with town hall. And then at the last minute, literally at the last minute, we were told that Riley Lumber property would be available. Could we look at a new building instead on the existing Prosser site? So we basically took that architecture and transposed it onto the, onto the Prosser site without really a lot of time to reconsider that. We had really landed originally in that study on the town hall site.
If I'm not mistaken, because I was involved back then too, I don't believe that the 2016 Prosser one, I thought that that was a renovation and an expansion, not a brand-new building.
That's correct, but the concept is, the, the concept is very different.
Right.
Yes. It's very traditional and blending in, and the other is very modern and, and, you know, very sharp to the eye. So I just wondered, in terms of the development of ideas over time, we're, we're looking for something that's going to sit there for more than 30 years or 40 years. We need to, in my mind, we need to choose something that's going to have permanence in terms of concept. So I'm wondering what, where you think architecture is moving? Will this kind of, of a shape and this kind of an idea have endured in, in terms of beauty?
I said at the very beginning, you know, this basic, the type of this building, front porch and building behind, is very classic idea. It's a Greek temple was done this way. And since then, many, many important buildings built that way, from colonnade and building behind. This is nothing we cooked up. This, this is based on very historic, traditional building concept. And if you look at the exterior, it got many part from the church. And so it has many of historic element, but it expressed in much more open way. Because as I said, remember, you are building library for 24th century. And you don't just put now books and all this library into one of those traditional brick building. It's, you really have to create building which is welcoming, open, transparent. And for new role of library, I see new role of libraries very much, not just book, but more social interactions and computers and all new things. You really should respond to that new nature, new direction of library. That's why I think this is expressed in that way. I hope I can explain why we did this, this way.
Thank you.
I don't, I really don't see, you want to put this here in a brick building or traditional, like a town hall architecture on this side. I don't see that meets my definition of building for 21st century library.
Thank you.
Thank you. My, my second question has to do with the choice to link it in terms of color to the church as opposed to the brick of all the other buildings, including the outbuildings of the church.
Well, church is the most prominent building right now over there. Town hall is step backs. Town hall is step backs so much from the road. So when you walk around there, yes, you can see the town hall, but town hall does not contribute significantly as a structure to formation or creating this center, town center. I think town center will be created with church and this library. Yes, town hall is there, but you go look town hall is not going to be very contributing from element to this, this corner.
Thank you.
Why, why I, I think church and that, again, I said many in New England, how you go, there's a wonderful church, white church, and there's a wonderful white buildings around it. I think that's very New England traditional town center.
Thank you. Budanzi?
Thank you. I, I kind of agree with what Lois is saying. And since our last conversation, I had additional thoughts about all of the brick and the masonry. And I, and I did some, I did some questioning of people that, that deal with this in terms of the maintenance. And that, that's part of my concern with the sustainability of a building that has these large windows to maintain them, the high ceilings. I see that you've brought it down some, but that they're still going to be high. I, I think you're getting closer to what I'm, I'm actually looking for or what's been conveyed to me that people would like to see. And, and when I had this discussion with you last week, I gave reference to having a look at your portfolio and, and, and creating something smaller scale, not as intrusive, and that would fit in. So to be more specific, I'm, I, I want to see you incorporate something more like the Anne Whitney Owen Arts and Science Center that you guys did at Miss Porter School. That design isn't as, as intrusive and it seems like there's a lot of light there in the ceiling versus there being a lot of large windows. So if you could kind of think in that aspect or take that into consideration, that would be appreciative. But that also ties into the previous sketches from 2016 as well, where there's, there's more brick. There's more brick. So when thinking about the design, think about not just the cost of the materials to buy it, but the cost of replacements of any materials that would have to be replaced as well as the cost of maintenance and repairs.
Thank you. Mark?
Thanks for, you know, paying attention and continuing to develop the design. And I think you've made some really interesting developments there. You know, in terms of scale and size, I don't see how this building could be any smaller from a volume sense. You know, we've, we've identified our needs. You know, we know how many square feet we've boiled this thing down to. And you really kind of shrunk this package down as small as it could get. If, if, you know, if we want to get traditional pitched roofs and things, we're going to create a larger, more volumetric building. We're going to be adding attic spaces and unnecessary things like that in order to create that kind of architecture. So I think from a scale point, this is as small as it can get. And, and I think that the, the amount of glass on the building is so appropriate, especially when you look at that nighttime view with the light pouring out of the building. I'm not concerned about the, the life cycle cost of brick versus glass. I, I, I think that's kind of a non-issue over time. But the, we need a lot of glass. I mean, we, we just really need a lot of glass. This is, this is a building that wants to live inside and out and, and do those things. So Tysoo, you talked about, you know, classical Greek, you know, colonnade, which is, which is great, but I think by adding the those moon shaped clear story windows along the top, you've also incorporated a, a traditional idea of the building really emphasizing a base, a middle and a top. You know, you see that as well in there, which helps break down the, the perceived scale of it as well. So I think you've really headed in, in a very good direction and with the understanding that design will continue. So I'm still excited about it. I think it's taken steps in the right direction. I, I, I really think the white is respectful of the church and also sort of saying, you know, here I am, I'm, I'm the new library. I'm not hiding. I'm not, you know, I, I wanna, I wanna make a statement. So I really like it.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I must say that I appreciate the agreeability of the architects to entertain additional and/or flexible ideas. I would have to say though, that from the standpoint of the amendments that have been offered this evening, especially the clear story windows and the other things that have been changed. I made it very plain that I wasn't in favor of the first rendition, but I think it's much more honest than the second. It just gives me a feeling of add on that if it makes some people comfortable, it doesn't do anything for me. The main concerns that I have about the building are the colonnade. And from the standpoint of Aranda and how that fits into Bloomfield, that escapes me. But what I would really like to mention this evening are that I have five main concerns about the building. I'm going to mention one of them tonight to be respectful of everybody's time. But I believe that I heard a request for additional ideas to be brought forward and I'd be happy to furnish those. So my concerns are, or I should say, one of the things that I thoroughly approve of that we're actually discussing these matters at the table tonight, because we've done very little of this. And that hasn't given the public the opportunity to see how we work, number one, and what we are accomplishing. The more information on the public record that the public can see and share in, the better. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think we've done a good job at that. I believe that the public has been in many ways excluded from the discussion and having a direct opportunity to not only evaluate our work as we do it and the final deliverable, which for us will be the new library. Therefore, my first concern that I have outlined for you has to do with, and I've brought this subject up before. I have studied it to a, a great extent and haven't changed my opinion of it, done a great deal of research on it. And that is Mountain Road as the main access to the proposed library. That main access, as you all know, is going to serve pedestrians, cyclists, mass transit automobiles, drop offs of people who have special needs and ambulatory limitations, loading, unloading and deliveries. And my concern include that there has been no meaningful discussion of public safety issues and the functionality of accessing the site at this table. The following discussion points are, that are my concerns. How traffic turns into the site will function both to the library proper and to the auxiliary parking site eastbound and westbound. Crosswalk function from the federated housing site of Mountain Avenue. Pedestrian walks designed and approved. Often pedestrian walks end up because of the busyness of a thoroughfare to require traffic controls, speed limits, lighting at crosswalks. Are other traffic controls needed? If roundabouts are built, traffic does not stop. How do pedestrians, cyclists navigate this? Are we talking about gridlock situations? I'll bet we are. So what do we do here? Time has now been illustrated as an issue. And it's a good thing that we receive the schedule of events as they are moving forward, because now is the time to address real concerns, not after the fact that the concept is approved. It gets more and more expensive, as we all know, to do that. Surprise costs are not well received, not by me anyhow. So what my proposal is, I move to have the town of Bloomfield to hire a professional traffic engineer ASAP to review the existing traffic configuration and comment in detail with drawings, a safe, effective and attractive access plan to the proposed site plan. If one can be executed on Mountain Road, so be it. I have reservations about that. But I also realized then that a new access to the library, main access, creates another whole design question. And I think we should look at that now. I would be looking for best management practices from the standpoint of traffic engineering to be provided and also providing an alternative access plan if indeed the existing plan is determined to be too deficient by professional standards. I would expect this professional to work cooperatively with the town's DPW and refer to the town's complete streets policy. That is my motion.
I second that motion.
Any discussion on that?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to raise my hand.
No, no, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, but can we, can, isn't that part of, aren't they gonna do part of their architect? Let me ask you a question, aren't you gonna do traffic studies? And make sure it's safe that these things work, what you're proposing? Aren't you gonna hire a traffic engineer to review those plans if you don't have one on, on, on staff?
Are you asking me the question?
No, no, I'm asking Tysoo architects. Are you hiring a traffic engineer for what you proposed? Or do you have inside staff who are, who are gonna review those plans?
We refer the traffic questions to an outside specialist, an outside consultant. It is a discipline that's a specialty. So we normally engage the services of such traffic engineers separately.
That's, that's what I saw.
That is normal practice for us when we're developing the full design as well as site lighting, site traffic, signage, details about landscaping, walkways. All of those things are important and are part of the review process that we'll have to go through, through planning and zoning, design review and so on. That's normal. And we wouldn't be, and that's what we would normally do anyway. But it's a question of timing. When does that happen? Our study, our study does not include traffic at this stage. It would be something that would be done after the referendum when full design would proceed.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, we, we are showing a conceptional design and for sake of referendum purpose. Now, what Michelle, you are asking to do is during the later part of schematic design or early design development, and we will do entire traffic study on access, safety and so on, so on. That is not in our scope. That's not intended for this study. And so I understand your concern. So, you know, you, you're not approving design here. I, we are not asking you to approve the design. I mean, I think ideally you, you wanted to show something to public so that when public vote referendum, they gonna see what, what kind of building might be. Yeah, this is all it might be. So it's not a final, I, I understand this, this is a difficulty of sorting out sequels, but what troubles me most is we are hired to do a very early site selection process. And we are asked to provide a sketch to show what building might be. And then, you know, all these questions comes out and that's later stage.
Right, thank you, Tysoo. No, no, hold on, excuse me. I am going to turn it over to, I believe I saw Bob Berman's hand up. Before doing that, I would say that, again, as we all know, this is a conceptual design. And in my opinion, the traffic studies take place post referendum when we get into a final design and plan. And this is the tactic to delay the process. We already have what we've engaged our architects to do. Anything else requiring traffic studies, traffic engineers at this stage is an attempt to delay the project. And we are not, well, excuse me, I will open it up for further discussion. Bob Berman, please go, and then I'll go to Mark.
Exception to your comment.
Well, thank you, but. Bob Berman, please. Raise your hand if you want to speak.
I want it noted on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I initially had comments for, for when Tysoo Kim makes a presentation to council. But there's a motion on the floor, that kind of takes precedence for it. Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote on the motion so that we can move forward. So I call the question.
All right.
I have the right to comment, Mr. Chair, because Mr. Tysoo Kim addressed a comment to me.
Well, you know what, Michelle, you can wait until you're called upon and please raise your hand. I asked you to raise your hand. I don't see your hand raised in the.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I have to speak.
Raise your hand, please. There are others in front of you.
On your technicality, certainly.
Yes, it's not a technicality.
Well, if you apply it to everyone else, the question, are you, are you answering my question?
How do I? Mark, go ahead and present your comment.
Yeah, Ed, I agree with you, Greg. At, at this point in the process, I don't see any reason to go into that level of detail. It's certainly important points that Michelle brings about, but they're all going to be answered post referendum. Unless, unless we think there's a fatal error in this concept, which I don't see. Right now, we have a driveway that we are using solely for the library, where this new driveway is going to be for only a few parking spaces and accessible entry to the, to the building. We have an existing driveway that has been used for umpteen years for the Riley Lumber, which will take the majority of the parking for the library. So I think there are legitimate questions, but I don't see a fatal problem here stop to stop us in our tracks and question them when they can be adequately addressed post referendum. Thank you.
Budanzi?
Yes, um, you know, this conversation is a bit out of control. And, and I want to start by saying that I think that the concerns are valid. Because basically, the question is, is when designing this building, did you take those things into consideration? Now, we know that you're not professionals at it. We know that that's not your scope. But when trying to design the building, and, and Mark just gave reference to what the back parking lots and stuff will be, that had never been a part of the discussion. So, you know, pardon us for not knowing, but I do think that they're valid questions and that they should be something that's in the forefront of your mind when you're designing the building, the flow of traffic. All along, that has been my concern, based on the different locations in which have been presented, traffic, traffic, traffic and the traffic patterns. So, I mean, I think that some can be cavalier and act as though, you know, cross that bridge when we get to it. I think that that's a poor approach, because basically, we don't know what this building will evolve into at the end of the day until after referendum. There's so many things that are after referendum, after referendum. That's like going to a, a store and you're a blind shopper. You can't, you can't identify what it is, but you touch the first thing and then you purchase it. You don't know what you're gonna get. And I think that we have to do our due diligence to ensure that it, it works for our community in terms of accessibility, excuse me. It works for our community in terms of cost and the schematics work to fit into our community. A, a part of me, Mr. Kim, I understand your vision and I've looked at your work and I appreciate the, the work that you do. I like your architectural designs. But, I mean, really, it's up to the people here in terms of what we like. Now, I did read the article from 1963 as it relates to there being disagreements. I get that too, and that's what we're having here. But I think that these are earnest. But I think that these are earnest discussions and hard conversations that need to take place on this fast track of passing this. Because really, this is being fast tracked. And, and, and Mr. Chair, you illustrated that by saying, nothing is gonna stop this. Well, I beg to differ. Because who's gonna stop this is the people of Bloomfield. And if you don't want it stopped by the people of Bloomfield, who will be voting on this in referendum, then I think that these conversations need to be had in all earnest. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, then we're gonna call the question to a vote.
Okay, I would just like to have you know, Mr. Chairman, that I appeal your decision not to let me speak as being inappropriate. And it seems to me that a person who has an opinion that is in disagreement is not accorded the courtesy of having that opinion that is in disagreement. I will probably be best served by bringing this down to a condensed version of my concern. The condensed version of my concern has to do with the fact that if information with regard to a professional review, and we have no professional traffic engineers with regard to this project to date, could necessitate the change of acts, the main access to this building, which is not a small detail to be addressed down the road. This could be a wholesale change that would require major thought and major financial contribution, which I am seeking to avoid. I disagree that now is not the time to have a look at it. I don't think that it would be a very expensive proposition to have the decision assured. Safety of the community is my number one concern. I don't believe that anybody knows what the situation is going to be once all of these changes roundabouts are included in this picture. That's why we need a professional to look at it to avoid a wholesale exterior design change. That is my motivation.
Thank you. We're gonna call the motion to question. All in favor of Michelle's motion, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Can we have a full screen, please? Richard or Ty Su?
Opposed.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, all opposed, please raise your hand or signify by saying aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so I think it carries, it does not carry two to six. It fails two to six. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The reason I had my hand up before, I'd like to discuss those issues now. The presentation by Ty Su Kim to council next week.
Yes.
My suggestion is that you show them, that you show them the first thing you showed us and then show them the sketches from today. And any other changes based on what you've heard that you do is a third set. And point out and be very clear about the fact that the whole design thing is a work in progress, will continue to be a work in progress. And until after we have a referendum and hopefully it passes, will we begin to really get into what the design is really gonna look like? Because until then, a lot of stuff is gonna stay up in the air because it has to. Because as Michelle brought up, and she's correct, I agree with the fact we need a traffic study. That will be done once we know we're going forward and the money's available to pay for that. Because right now, the funds are very limited as to what is available, what we have, have and can spend them on. Unless we go back to council and ask for more money. And I suspect that's not something any of us want to do. But I think it means we all need to make it very clear to council and anybody else that what they see, when they look at any of this stuff, is simply a work in progress. It's, it's a thought. And then things are gonna change. And we know they're gonna change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Ty Su, Richard, do you have your hand?
About this coming Monday council's meeting and I really, people look at the picture and even though we say it's in progress, they're just gonna judge what they see. And this pencil drawing of revised idea is not gonna do justice. We really, as I said before, we like to hire somebody to do it more professionally so that it look equivalent to MacPren rendering so that they see a similar level. And we, we cannot do it coming Monday. I think best to say to council that it's a work in progress and, and they saw of early version. So, you know, architect is incorporating many comments. And it's gonna take time to come up with a new sort of visual presentation. So I would like to say that not to show anything is coming Monday, that's what, nine?
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth. And, and do it following meeting, I understand that June fourteenth. So I think we will be ready, June fourteenth, new version. And then they really can see the progress we are making and we are listening. We are incorporating many comments presented to us. So I would like to make that request. We do not present any drawings coming Monday, but following June fourteenth.
Elizabeth, did you have your hand up?
Um, Ty Su Kim partners Richard and Ty Su. I, I want to just applaud your responsiveness, it's impressive, thank you. Um, I'm surprised how much I like the clear story. I think it does tie the, that part of town together nicely. And it, it does soften things. That being said, I did like your initial design very much as well. I thought it was stately. I also want to remind everybody that appealing to youth is a huge part of this. And, and I, I know that I'm one of the youngest people on this committee. And I want to remind everybody about all the young people in Bloomfield, students, college students, millennials. We want to appeal to all age groups. And I think the symmetry and the light that will escape from this building will be so inviting and will be a wonderful additional presence to the town of Bloomfield. I also wanted to state that we are very responsive to the public and making sure that they are a part of this process. I can tell you that the library building committee page of the website is always up to date. As soon as these meetings are over, we work to make sure that that information is freely available and easy to find. And, and we did a lot of work making sure that the public knew about the info sessions and there will be more. So we will continue to be as transparent and inviting as possible as we move forward with this process. I do think that one final thought is, I think this building does look timeless. I think it, it has a presence. And it reminds me a little bit of the buildings in Lincoln Center in New York, where when you're in front of them, you're just like, wow, this is a place I want to be in and be a part of. So I'm excited. And I'm also excited about the timeline because time is of the essence in terms of having these buildings delivered to our public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
So, so let's talk about the timeline. I, I agree with you, Ty Su, that we need our best rendering to go to the town council for June fourteenth. I, I think the council, the public deserves, you know, the, the best representation of this project, even though we all know it will continue to develop. So saying that, do you need direction from this committee now in order to have that ready for June fourteenth? Or? Or do we take more time to deliberate on these designs and, and you still could have it ready for June fourteenth? It's a loaded question, I know. But, but I, you know, your, your idea of, of not presenting any images to the council this coming Monday, I have mixed feelings about that. I think they're adult enough that we can be transparent and show them where we're at, show all the effort that you've made. And, you know, and they can know what we know at this point. Knowing that June fourteenth, we're gonna have our best shot at what the public will be voting on in concept, concept. So I put that question to you. And, and, and before you answer, I just wanna, I, I really want to calm some people down about, this is not fast tracked. We are not skipping any steps. This is what it takes to go to referendum. Unless the town wants to spend $250,000, $300,000 to go through all the various consultants, answer all the questions that will get answered. I mean, this building's not gonna be built in an unsafe way, ever. And so this is, you know, a very normal thoughtful process of pre-ref referendum, what we're doing here. So it's not, we're not, that word fast tracked is, has nothing to do what we're doing with what we're doing here. I think our schedule is very reasonable, it always has been. And it's, it's just something we need to stay with, because it is reasonable. So I'll let you, I'll let you answer my question now.
Richard, Ty Su, yeah.
Well, Mark, you could say to council architect presented after you guys discussed three different versions of a possible direction and you directed architect a direction and they are working on it. And June fourteenth, they will come, come back with that, the one committee endorsed renderings. And so I think in reminding them, you know, what process you are going through and architect is working with you and listening to you guys and making that changes that we are doing now. And so I think that sort of give them the comfort and sense of progress moving forward. And June fourteen, they were gonna see pictures. But I'm just afraid if you just show pencil drawing or this is what they, they may just, some negative things, they just accentuated negativity. So I'm afraid of showing the sketchy. Because sketch, you know, we, we know architect and people get the sketch, understand. But many people don't understand this black and white sketch. So that's my, my, and I would like to proceed if you endorse option B as a, as a A option to move forward.
So I think that was a yes.
Well, I mean.
That you can get the rendering done by June fourteen.
Yes, yes.
But you're asking for, you're asking for action tonight from this committee on that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and I, I think that at this point, what I'd like to do, Ty Su, a couple of things. First of all, with respect to the council presentation, I believe that your initial exterior design has already been public. So I think that we need to use that on the twenty fourth because that's what we have already made available, not only to this committee but to the public. With the understanding that there will be a revised design on the, whatever that, I'm sorry, the twenty fourth and then the following meeting, we could have the revised design. But I do think that we have to be transparent and use what we've already made public. Having said that, I guess I would entertain a motion to allow TSKP to proceed with putting together a formal design of this presentation that they made today on option B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. We have with us tonight Dave Patrick from Downs Construction. Dave is going to present some of our energy options vis a vis the two buildings. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dave to give us a few minutes on some of their thoughts and recommendations on energy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee asked us to take a look at the possibility of alternative energy, both in the form of photovoltaic and geothermal. We have invited and partnered with a company called Veragey. They're a local Hartford firm and they have put together a presentation. And so I'm gonna turn it over, even though on the screen it says Dave Patrick, it's not my twin or my clone, Will Herschel. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Will. And if we could allow Will to share his screen, I think he's got a presentation that he'll run for.
You should be able to, to, to do it, let me know if you can't, Will.
Just tried, can you, can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic, thank you everyone, really appreciate being here. And Dave, thank you very much for the introduction. So as Dave mentioned, we're a Hartford-based company, we're called Veragey and we do commercial and small utility scale solar development. And as you'll see in this presentation, what we're gonna show you is something that a lot of municipalities across this state and many other states have taken advantage of to reduce their, their spend on, on utility bills. So this screen right here just is obvious, this is a very early concept of what you would see for this potential situation, but is a rooftop solar array. And the rooftop solar array is probably the most common use of solar photovoltaics to reduce the cost of utility expenses, reduce the cost of energy from municipalities across the state. Give you an idea, we did the West Hartford Town Hall in this fashion, which is also a flat roof application. We did the King Philip Middle School in West Hartford, we're working with West Haven on a couple of their schools and libraries. We're also working with Newington to do a number of their facilities. And they're all looking at the same concept, which is to locate solar panels on the rooftop and actually put that power directly into the building on site. So that's the high-level concept of what I'm showing here on the screen. As I mentioned, this is a very, very early rendering of what this system could look like. I know that there's the potential for additional rooftop units to disturb this very simple and kind of cohesive array. But there's things that we can do to make sure that we adjust based off what the final design looks like. So this is a very early concept. So what you're looking at is a hundred and twenty-nine kilowatt system DC. That system is gonna be located on the rooftop, as I previously mentioned, and it's gonna produce a certain number of kilowatt hours a year. And I think everyone knows that, you know, when you get your utility bill, you pay for kilowatt hours. And so every kilowatt hour that's produced by this system is going to be delivered to the utility meter that's onsite for the library. So you're gonna be using that solar energy right onsite. So that's, that's the size of the system, hundred and forty-seven thousand kilowatt hours a year. And we're just indicating that based off of our estimation and to create that estimation for production in given year, we want to make sure that we have access to sunlight. And so when we did the analysis for this individual site, we just took away that tree. And I think based off of the renderings that I've seen in this meeting, it seems like that tree is going to be gone. But if it needs to remain in place for whatever reason, we would just rerun the numbers for the production estimate for that individual site. So every, every system that we go and we lay out like this and we show in a presentation, make sure we estimate appropriately the production of that individual facility. Because as you'll see in the following slides, that's important for understanding what your savings will be. Any questions on the design in general before I jump to the next slide? And maybe I should continue the presentation before asking questions. And I'll take your, take your guide chair.
Continue, Will.
Will do. All right, so on this first slide, we're showing you a summary of the financial options that are available for this individual project, right? The first thing is probably the most traditional option that you can think of. The city, or the town of Bloomfield want to purchase that array. So if you want to outlay capital to buy. So if you want to outlay capital to buy the array, then you would own the system. And a hundred percent of the energy would come onto the site and be used at the site free of charge. You'd own the system, have an upfront capital expense, be able to use the power onsite. Um, so the cost of that system would be two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Because you're not a taxpayer, we could reduce the cost of that system using something called a deposit lease. Where we would own the system for a period of years, so we could use the tax benefits. Uh, and then at the end of that time, transfer ownership to you. But for your purposes, it would be the same as any traditional purchase. We just get to reduce the upfront cost, right? So the next way that you can potentially benefit from solar, and this is the most popular way for most municipalities. Something that has no upfront capital expenditure. It's called the power purchase agreement or PPA. So in this concept, what you're looking at is actually paying a rate for every kilowatt hour that is produced by the solar array. And that rate is going to be less than what you would otherwise pay the utility company. And the rate that's specified in this presentation is six point eight cents per kilowatt hour, right? It would be a twenty-year agreement. It would be flat, meaning there'd be no escalator on that price. So you would know what you would pay for each kilowatt hour that's going to be produced by that array for twenty years. And that really just serves to provide a lot of, um, steadiness to your energy costs. I know earlier mentioned, I think some, some concerns or, uh, potential concerns on what the cost of energy would be based on the system or the design of the individual building. That would help you understand what those costs would be going forward. Um, and you can also see on this slide here. Your issue. Did you, did it get paused? I think it did. Hold on, let me try. One moment. So you'll also see over here that the offset for this individual building is an expected ninety-eight percent. You don't want to have a system that is larger than the expected consumption of an individual building. And the reason you don't want to have a system that's larger than the expected consumption is because. If you outkick that usage, you can't take the advantage of something called net metering. So you wouldn't get the full retail value of power if you're out producing at any given moment. So the sun's out and the, the building, for whatever reason, it's a nice, cool day, isn't using any of its, uh, resources. And you're actually producing more power than the building is using instantaneously. You're still rolling back your, your meter and you're getting a hundred percent of that benefit. If over a period of one year, you were actually out producing the annual usage of that facility, then you wouldn't get that same benefit. So that's why we make sure the system is sized less than a hundred percent. Just calling that out there. The incentives that are listed here are state-level incentives. So this is the LREC ZREC program that you may be familiar with in the state of Connecticut. Essentially, the ability to sell a renewable energy credit to the interconnected utility company, EverSource, uh, for a fixed price over a period of time. There's also tax benefits, which I mentioned, but you, uh, as a nonprofit or as a municipality are subject to taxation. So you can't take advantage of those individual tax benefits. The return on investment based off of an actual capital expenditures indicated here would be eight point one nine years. Uh, would have a net present value of a hundred thousand dollars and an internal rate of return of thirteen percent. I don't know how important those figures are, um, but we want to make sure that it's available to you should you have further questions. Again, this only comes into play if you're actually looking to purchase the system. So that was the general summary, right? One more thing to add before I leave, leave this slide is that the EV charging stations, we have already contemplated including four, including four of those EV charging stations. Into this individual application. So it's taken into consideration the price as well as the PPA. So here is a detail of the power purchase agreement. Um, and what this is showing you is that as the individual system produces power, um. You're going to receive a certain amount of utility savings. Um, and you're going to receive a certain cost for that PPA. So your savings on an individual basis are going to be five thousand dollars in that first year and escalate over time. As the price per kilowatt hour that you pay us for the power that's produced by the solar array on the rooftop. Is less than the price per kilowatt hour that you otherwise paid to the utility. So that's the power purchase agreement option, which is the no capital upfront. You just certainly, you, all you're doing, the only obligation that the municipality would have is to purchase power that's produced by the ray on the rooftop. In the purchase scenario, like I previous, previously mentioned, what you're going to be doing is getting a hundred percent of the benefit of the energy that's coming from your roof. Because you're the owner of the system. You're going to be getting the utility savings, which is based off of the current bills that you guys pay. You're also going to be getting revenue by selling those ZRECs that I previously mentioned. So the renewable energy commodity component, you're going to be selling directly to EverSource and you're going to be taking as a revenue. The total of those utility savings and that CREC revenue, uh, is indicated in this column here. And that cost of the system is shown here. That's in that deposit lease scenario where there's a reduction in that purchase price. Because we're taking advantage of the tax benefits. And your year-over-year, uh, financial performance is contained over on the right. And this, all of this marries to that summary slide that I previously showed you in terms of IRR and net, net present value. This is just some high-level information in terms of the environmental aspects. A lot of times when we're working municipalities, what they'd like to see is in the building somewhere, uh, a screen that shows, you know, how much, uh, renewable energy is my rooftop producing today? How many trees are, am I, uh, you know, offsetting in terms of carbon sequestration? Uh, what are the gallons of gasoline consumed that I'm offsetting? Uh, all of those types of things is something that we provide and, and a lot of times with municipalities, they like to see. And so this is just a very quick breakdown of some of the environmental benefits, which are, you know, very important. Um, aside from the economic benefits for the system. So each year, this, this system is going to, uh, you know, reduce a hundred and four point two metric tons of carbon dioxide. So it's a pretty significant reduction in carbon emissions, uh, just by having this relatively small system kind of contained on the rooftop. This is just some background on our company. As I previously mentioned, uh, we focus on these types of installation, commercial installations, municipal installation, small utility installations. We don't do residential installations. Um, we own and operate the system long-term in that PPA format. Unfortunately, we're based in Hartford, which is relatively close to Bloomfield. And I know I went through that relatively quickly. I imagine there's going to be some questions, uh, but Chair, if, if you're ready, I'd be prepared to take some.
Okay, great. Uh, well, I had a question myself. With the lease op, lease option, you talked about the, uh, PPA. Uh, for kilowatt hour, what's the delta on which we would be paying otherwise on a market basis for the, uh, PPA per kilowatt hour?
Sure. So we estimated the current price that you're paying on a per kilowatt hour basis to be ten point five six cents per kilowatt hour. The price that we would charge you for the kilowatt hour that's coming from your rooftop would be six point eight cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
And we are only using in this offsettable charge, um, charges that we can offset with our solar. There's other things on your bill that are fixed charges, like demand charges, which are instantaneous charges for usage. That we don't know for certain that we can offset on your bill. So we've kept those costs out and only included the kilowatt hour charges on your bill that we absolutely will offset.
Okay. Any questions for Will? Uh, see Lois and Mark.
Thanks for the presentation, Will. Um, I guess I'd, I'd like to know what are the disadvantages of owning the system? Um, we're going to be, uh, doing with, with a bond issue and adding two hundred, what was it? Three, let's say three hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred and thirty-seven, yep.
Yeah, to the bond issue of, uh, almost thirty million. Are the advantages of owning it, uh, worth doing that as opposed to, uh, having, uh, having you buy, uh, but, but pay us for the power?
It potentially could be. Uh, most municipalities are not in a position where they are going through a remodeling or, uh, you know, building a whole new building and going through a bonding pro- uh, process. At the time that they're selected to do this. So that does play into why the most common use is the PPA for municipalities. Um, there is certainly an argument to be made that the purchase option is going to be the most lucrative to the city over a period of time. Uh, you actually get to own it, you get a hundred percent of the benefit. And beyond the twenty-year PPA, you're going to have an opportunity to take advantage of that system so long as it's productive. It has an active useful life for thirty-five years. Of course, you have to measure that against the useful life of the roof, but that is absolutely an advantage. One of the things is a disadvantage is that instead of having us, the solar company, owning the facility, you would own it. So you would have to hire someone like us to make sure that it's appropriately maintained, making sure that it, we're going through the appropriate protocols. And that's producing power of the way that it should be producing power. Sometimes when municipalities have purchased things like this in the past. They maybe have like a five-year contract for operations and maintenance, but after that period of time, it can be neglected just because it's a little bit out of sight, out of mind. And so that would be one potential concern, uh, whereas we as the owner of solar projects typically are very interested to make sure that they're always performing. And that's specifically what we do. Um, so hopefully that answered your question.
Mark?
Will, you're showing thirty-five years, uh, on this, uh, screen here for the purchase option.
Yep.
Uh, and you've, uh, on the PPA, you've shown.
Twenty, 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 that's right.
Okay. So it's not apples to apples in terms of the overall, uh, uh, cost benefit to the town, right?
That's right. And the reason that we show twenty is because that's the initial term for the PPA. At the end of the PPA, you would have extension options. So we could expand this over a period of time. But typically, the, the first term or the initial term of the power purchase agreement is twenty years.
Okay. Um, in, in terms of, uh, opportunity, uh, efficiency, uh, kind of rating this job from a solar. How, how is this, is this a good prospect is, you know, compared to other, uh, buildings? How, how would you, uh, to a layman say, you know, is this a good thing we should be doing or is it? You know, how would you, how would you describe this?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's probably around a B plus in terms of just a vast array of different rooftops, right? So if you're looking at a rooftop that is significantly broken up, um, that doesn't have a contiguous central array like this one has. Um, I think this is a fairly good application. I know that there may be some additional RTUs that are installed up there, uh, based off what the final design looks like. Uh, but I don't see any major impediments to it. Some of the times that you see, you know, some bad applications are when you see a lot of pitched roofs, right? So you, you're pitching roofs that are not facing south. It's ideal for the solar array to be facing south with a flat roof. And actually tilted modules and all of these modules are panels. You can tilt the panels to face south in a very, uh, you know, uh, consistent way. So if you have a lot of pitches on your roof, many different rooftop units creating shading on the areas, uh, high parapet walls that would create shading. A lot of surrounding tree foliage, which this site does not have creating shading, that would be a bad site. This is, this is not a bad site. This is a very good, I'd say, very good application.
And, and, and Dave Patrick, in terms of, um, there's some modest structural considerations, correct? For these panels that, that we would need to build into the job?
Yes, a- and I think that's something that we would need to discuss, um, when we get further into the engineering. This system can be ballasted or it can be structurally attached. Um, you know, my, just my construction background tells me I'd rather see it attached and not ballasted. Uh, but yes, there would be some minor modifications, you know. Connections in terms of tube steel and base plates that we would need to add to the roof structure. So that the solar panels could get, um, could get attached to the roof. And the, the other thing, Mark, that I would add to this is also because it's a brand-new building and you would be putting solar on a brand-new roof. Um, that also, I think, helps in the overall analysis, um, that, you know, you're going to put a roof on here. We're going to get a twenty-year warranty. And I think, Will, in our discussions, you said that, uh, historically, the solar panels actually, by keeping the, um. The sun, uh, the sunlight, the ultraviolet off of these roofs actually prolong the life expectancy. They protect them in a, in essence. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, just, just by a function of them being there, that's correct. And, and in addition to that, Dave, you know, we work, you know, with Dave. And we're going to work with the roofing manufacturer to make sure that all the warranties for the roof remain in place for its life. It's very typical for these installations to be on flat roofs. And no matter which manufacturer you select for that rooftop, uh, application, we're going to be working directly with them to make sure that everything is, is, you know, remains in place.
Nancy, I see your hand.
Yep. Um, I have a few questions. My first question, I'm not sure if it's for Dave or for Will. But is a rooftop option our only option or would be something like covered parking on the Riley site be something that would be, um, beneficial to consider?
So like me to take it in?
We, we talked about that. Go ahead, Will.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly an option. The reason that we selected the rooftop application is because the, the installation on the rooftop is much less expensive than an installation in a carport canopy. And so instead of having a power purchase agreement at that six point eight cent per kilowatt hour rate, you would have one that's much closer. Uh, or very close to equal to what it would be you would pay the utility company. And so it's just a much more costly installation. And so when we look at any site, whether it be, uh, you know, a flat parcel or a site with multiple buildings. We try to find the best application based off the usage that's located at that site. And because you're only using, you know, about a hundred kilowatt DC of production for that individual, for this location. That rooftop unit, uh, is really the best application. If you were going to go and do a small, we, we would consider a small canopy of a hundred kilowatts. The cost would even be higher relatively speaking than you would have if you were looking at a five hundred kilowatt, uh, DC canopy. So as you get smaller in size, the cost goes up. And just doing a canopy application for this individual site was such an attractive group, didn't make sense to us. But it's certainly something that can be done.
And my second question, I'm, I'm a bit confused about how all the pricing works. Um, a majority of our electric bill is actually not the cost of the power, but all of the local, you know, the ever source costs. Um, and I thought I heard you say that a lot of those costs will still remain. And I guess I'm kind of curious as to how many of the, those types of costs will remain.
Sure. Yeah. So your, your individual bill is broken up into kilowatt hour charges and demand charges. And the kilowatt hour charges contain cost of generation, so the actual cost of the electrons and the power. It, it includes the transmission cost, the cost of getting that power there from transmission. And the distribution cost, the cost of getting it from the transmission through the ever source grid to your actual utility meter. And so all of those kilowatt hour charges that I just called out would be offset by this array. So you don't have to pay transmission and distribution charges because we're not actually going to be using the wires. You're going to be delivering that power right onto the site. And so those are the costs that we offset. What we don't offset are the demand charges. So there's a flat rate. Instead of being a charge, you know, per kilowatt hour on your bill, you're going to see a flat rate per kilowatt. And that means if you're going to draw at a certain amount at any instantaneous period of time, any fifteen-minute interval across a month or a billing period. Uh, then you're going to get charged a flat rate for that. We don't know that we're going to offset that. We think we will. We think it's because the presence of the solar, when you guys are going to be using those power, we should reduce that demand. But there's no guarantee that the, you know, a cloud could come over, it could be a very cloudy day and you could be your highest peak for that month. There's no guarantee that we're going to shave that down. So we exclude that from the savings analysis.
So, so just so I'm clear, because our, we do have a, a third-party provider who's with the actual, um, electricity. But so we would be saving all of that plus any of our ever-source charges that are kilowatt hour driven, correct?
That's right. Yeah. And, and we, and we would just work with whoever your third-party supplier is for generation to make sure that it's more within the confines of that contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Denzil and, uh, go ahead, Budanze.
Thank you. Um, we have solar, um, some solar farms here. We have one on town property at our Board of Ed and then one of our, um. Living, uh, communities, independent living communities or retirement communities has some there. Is it possible for those facilities to interface with this?
It is not. So in order for you to do that, you'd have to use something called virtual net metering. And unfortunately, in the state of Connecticut, virtual net metering is capped. So there's a legislative cap that has been reached in terms of the total amount of credits that would be allowed to go to multiple accounts within the same municipality. So the only way you could use this solar array or the solar arrays that you just mentioned at the other facilities is directly onsite to where they're located.
Wait, say that to me one more time. I want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly, please.
Sure. So, so the, the only way that you can use the solar array that's shown here. Or the solar arrays that you've mentioned that were at those other facilities within the town that are, that are at town-owned, uh, properties. Is by using the power directly on the site where those solar panels are located.
Okay. So there is an option. Okay. Will we be provided this, um, presentation, please? And thank you.
Yes, we will.
I will, uh, I'll make sure that I forward this to Nancy tonight or tomorrow morning.
Okay. Any more questions for Will? All right. Uh, well, that was helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Will.
We may call you back at a later date, uh, but this has been very fruitful and, and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, I think photovoltaic is a very good, a very good option. I have to say that the presentation on geothermal is not as exciting as photovoltaic. We talked to a geothermal company, very well-respected here in Connecticut. And their estimate was for about 30 wells. And what, what we found was is we have a number of different issues. First and foremost, the geothermal would be probably somewhere between 350 and 400,000, so considerably higher than the photovoltaic. They would need approximately a half acre to drill the wells, which would be, you know, it's difficult for us to, to provide that. They do not like to drill their wells underneath pavement and parking for long-term maintenance issues. And so when we started to, when we started to go through the site plan when we brought it to the geothermal company's attention, what we also have to do is we have to transmit the water from the ground back to the building. And the only likely way to do that would be to strap a pipe underneath the bridge and then bring it back in. Well, when you're strapping that pipe underneath the bridge, it's going to be exposed. And regardless of what you do from an insulation perspective, if that water is transmitting and sitting idle at night in a 10-degree day or, you know, very, very cold weather, then you're going to lose the, you're going to lose the energy that you gain by bringing the approximately 54-degree groundwater out of the ground. So once we, once we went through that analysis between needing a half an acre, the cost of the system, the maintenance problems, putting it underneath the parking lot, and then the exposed piping going over the bridge, it seemed obvious to us that the most preferable option and cost-effective option and the best option for the town of Bloomfield would be to put photovoltaic up on the roof. And so for that reason, we abandoned the idea of geothermal.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions of Dave?
Chairman, I have to go. I have another meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And Dave, thank you so much for that presentation. Again, we may ask you to revisit this discussion, but this has been very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's a lot of information and probably information that a lot of people don't hear on a day-to-day basis. So I will send the presentation out to Nancy so she can distribute it. And then anytime you have questions about it, feel free to reach out to me and I'll, I'll make sure I'll get them answered if I can't answer them myself.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, next we're going to go into approval of invoices. Nancy, have?
Yes, we have one. We have invoice number four. It's invoice number four to Tyseu Kim. Studio, TSKP, for the amount of $5,000.
They're emotional. Bob, is there a second? Lois, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing on the motion, Paris. Any other invoices, Nancy?
No.
Okay, great. Future meetings are, next meeting will be June 2nd, followed by June 16th. And before we go into public comments, we'll take comments from the committee. And thank everyone for the patience and time tonight. Lois?
I just want to say that I was fascinated by the changes that Tyseu Kim made to the building. And I, I think it really, to my eye, which is not a schooled eye, it really does help length the building, so I'm grateful for that. I'm still don't quite understand the whiteness of it, but I like the modifications that you made and I'll be very interesting, interested to see the final rendering, or not the final, the next.
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a working member and secretary of this committee, I take formal objection to having my motivations to our work being impugned by the chair. Dissent is part of the American fabric. No committee member should ever feel reprisal for dissenting. As a solution, I would suggest either a bylaw or a conduct rule to ensure that this does not happen again. Further, I will be sending my four points on to the committee in general and to Tyseu Kim and associates in particular, with regard to my other concerns, and look forward to his response. Thank you.
Thank you. Budanze?
Yes, thank you. Earlier during the conversation, when Leah gave her report out, I, I requested the report or wanted to know more about that report. And it was indicated that it was included. So I thought I overlooked something that was in our package. But then when I go back and I look at the package that was provided, as well as the minutes from that subcommittee meeting, there, there is a line item there that says she will be creating a report about the space plans. So with that having been confirmed, when can we expect that, Leah?
Yeah, that was just a miscommunication. The report Greg was referring to was my meeting report. The space planning report. Hopefully the next two weeks, so by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments from the committee? Okay. Nancy, any public comment?
Okay, anybody that's out there that would like to speak, raise your hand. I see one raised hand for now. We have Sten Casperson. Sten, unmute yourself and go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can hear me, yes?
Yes.
I was prepared to talk just for a very few minutes about the big question. Why is this library project so expensive? Specifically, why is the Prosser Library cost estimate so expensive? But I'm going to put that aside for the moment and instead ask the following question. Will the cost estimates that Downs has produced as a result of their contract be the cost estimates that are expected to go to the council? And then expected to go to referendum? Or with the details that have been provided and the variations that have been provided specifically for Prosser, will Dave Patrick Downs be asked to come up with new cost estimates? In other words, what are the cost estimates that the committee and the ad hoc committee are going to stand behind to go forward on this fast-track process?
Okay. Again, Sten, we take exception with the fast track. I don't know that it's a fast track, but we've had a schedule since we began this process. And the cost estimates from Downs, what we present to the council may be what we have currently from Downs. I don't imagine that it will be the cost estimates that will go to referendum because things will change between now and then. I don't know if Downs will have time to make any revisions to the cost estimates that we currently have, but if so, we will present those to council on the 24th.
Just a point, his estimate does not include an estimate for solar.
Correct.
Okay. I'll look forward to finding out what's being sent and we'll get together again.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public, raise your hand if you'd like to speak? I guess that's a no, so there's no one else in the public.
Nancy, I don't know if Will is still here, but I did get a question from someone about how long has Verage been in business? Do we know if Will's still with us?
David's with us.
I believe Will has dropped off, but I certainly can include that information with, to Nancy when I send the presentation in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved, so moved.
Thank you, sir. Again, thank everyone for your time and patience this evening. And I'll look forward to seeing everyone in two weeks. And if you all are available and interested, please join us on Monday for the council presentation.
I missed the second on who, who motioned to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Good night, everyone.